We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is December 5th, 2022, and it's at 6:30. Tel City Common Council Meeting. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could please stand and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Connie does have one addition to the agenda. It'd be item H under new business, and it's called credit cards. Credit cards under item H, new business. You may know that we did have a public hearing scheduled for this evening that... Okay?
The AARP funds is listed under item G.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me what that discussion is about?
That'd be about the small business nonprofit thing, just to kind of continuing from the last meeting that we wanted to review and put off till this month. That's correct. Yes, sir.
I'd also like to, if it was appropriate, I have a statement. I'd like to read the premium pay.
Okay. Do you want to just add that with that? Hyphen premium pay? Okay. Okay. And I was saying earlier, we were supposed to have a public hearing scheduled for the blight clearance that has been postponed at this time. So there's no other additions or changes to the agenda. Are we going to attend a motion to approve? Motion made by Larry, seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item on the agenda is presentation of minutes for approval. Counsel, you should have your October 4th. That was a special meeting. And your November 7th minute. I believe you all were at that. Now Larry wasn't able to attend a special one, and neither was John on the special.
I have some items of correction.
On which one?
I think that our items of correction are the November 7th minutes.
Okay.
Under the, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4 paragraph, the second-to-last sentence, motion to approve the minutes for the October 2023 meeting. I think that should be 2022. I apologize, Connie. I didn't get these minutes. I'm waiting on my idea.
And we checked them, but we still miss things.
On the section dealing with the premium pay, on the 33rd page, where city of the mayor killed, stated that he was exercising his right to veto the motion. I sent out an email to council members there, the attorney and I, questioning two things. One is how many votes does it take to override a veto? And I received an answer to that. It takes 60%, I believe, about 60% of the council members, which would be four votes, correct?
Correct. I think that's correct. I'm sorry, Larry. I can't do the math in my head.
The part that is still a little bit confusing to me is the statute, I think, Jeff, is real clear that the mayor has a right to veto ordinances and resolutions and orders. I know what an ordinance is. I know what a resolution is. I don't know what an order is.
Yeah, and I recall from the memo that I prepared that that is unclear. I'm unable to answer that definitively myself because there's just no litigation directly on point with regard to that issue. So...
Just wanted to point that out. I will see you a little bit later when you talk about premium pay. I will speak a little bit later about the veto and potential action. In the...
Are you stating that you want this information in these minutes? Or are you just bringing this up?
I'm just raising it as a point.
Okay.
Under the school of ordinance in the third line, I think they wrote that it didn't have a second and third reading by title only because there was not a majority vote. I believe that should be unanimous.
It should say unanimous. It has to be unanimous vote.
And the last thing on the next page, under the fresh red discussion on the third paragraph, we're sitting there, Chris King had to break the tie in order to cancel the motion. I don't believe the mayor is eligible to vote. I believe the motion simply dies for lack of a majority. I want a 2-2 tie vote.
I was always under the impression that if it's tied, the mayor always broke it, but I could be wrong.
Well, I'm asking our attorneys.
Oh.
I'd have to research that because I don't want to shoot from the hip on this. I can tell you my understanding is that that would be correct. A tie vote dies for lack of a majority. I just have to look at statutes, and I can do that, though.
Okay. So you've got a few changes on November 7th. We'll do these individual because the 24th, not everybody was here. So are we going to attend a motion to adopt or approve the October 24th minutes? Motion made by Julie, or seconded?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstaying.
Two upstays. I guess that passes.
Yes.
Okay. And now, October 7th. Are we going to attend a motion to approve those with the changes that Larry suggested? November, I'm sorry. Is that October? November 7th.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary. Do you hear a second? Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments or anything that's not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. If you come up to the microphone, please, so we can get you on camera, so everybody can see who's attending, and state your name and address for the minutes, please. Thank you.
My name is Judy Leach, and I'm from Tel City. And I'd just like to say I think whoever was responsible for putting the lights up on 12th Street, I think the snowflakes, I think they lit our eyes. Hopefully, we'll get some more.
Thank you.
And I'd like for people coming into town, going around me, and they can see our town, our pride and our town.
Thank you. That was my crazy idea, but... No, it doesn't sound too crazy, does it? But Judy, I'll just kind of touch base on your comment. So as we transition our main street, where the snowflakes in downtown were originally, as we put up new decorative street lighting, we'll implement what more of the garland, you know, colorful lights on the main street. So we'll have the snowflakes. That would be surplus at that point. Rather than sell them or dispose them, I thought it'd be best to actually repurpose them and put them down 12th Street. So as the rest of Main Street finishes up next year, we'll transition more snowflakes over to 12th Street. It'd be neat. I don't know if we have exact enough to kind of start at Washington, go all the way down, kind of outline 66 at the intersections, just to add a little extra. So thank you for that. That's, we'll see how it goes. So if anybody asks why there's not some blocks that don't have it, that's why. They'll be there next year. Any other comments of citizens? All right. We'll move down to committee and ward reports. We'll start first with Ward 1, Larry Kleeman.
I've got several names from all of the people who have been in my formal report. I saw this little thing on Facebook, and I know if you read Facebook, it'd be dangerous. I'll just read. Good. It says, "Being humble, recognizing that we are not others, to see how important we can become, but to see how much difference we can make in lives of others." So I'm going to try to remember that. So I'm going to stick up my bar here or something.
Very nice, Larry.
I did a tip of the meeting on the 15th of the county extension service had regarding the history of farming in Perry County. It was very informative and interesting, and I appreciate that sponsoring. On November 14th, I did, in the Department of Public Affairs, review the 11 applications that the city received from nonprofits and small businesses for the ARP funds. So I'll talk about that a little bit later when we get to that on the report. But I did review all of those applications. I did a drive-by today. It was just a quick drive-by of Royton Park. And I wish we could do something as far as additional playground equipment. There were one small piece of playground equipment in that park. If nothing else, we could have swing set crafts. I'm wondering if we could install a basketball court or a couple of basketball courts in that park. I don't think we'd want to do it on the soccer side, soccer field side of Windy Creek, but on the lotto street side of Windy Creek, I think there was room that that could be done. If that would be something we want to do.
Larry, can I interject? Would that be something we could consider for ARP funds, you think? That you'd be a...
I think I've got a lot of stuff that I could...
Just want to interject. I just want to get your thoughts because we have a meeting Wednesday. Okay. I'll write that down as a potential option.
Potentially, there is, there is potentially a long Windy Creek, again, on the soccer field side of Windy Creek. There is no long, a lotto street. And I don't know if that's something we should consider, if we're concerned about kids running out into the street as far as the safety factor. I don't know if it's ever been considered or not, but I just want to point that out. I don't know if we've ever considered or ever had a request from the, since that park is mainly utilized for soccer for the younger kids. There's ever been a request to install lighting on that field so they can practice or potentially play at night. I have no idea what the condition of the restrooms are. I've not been out or tried to get in them today. I've looked in them previously, but it's been a long time.
They're locked. They're locked right now. They've been winterized. They should be in pretty good shape. We went there and did a lot of painting this past summer. ARP funds are a few members of it. We did that, and so I would... Brandon's out there. Brandon, is it a, are they... I don't go in them, so... Okay. Thank you.
I just know that this one, the park, there's a potential one piece of, one small piece of playground equipment. There's a small shelter house and two victims. And that's it. Other than soccer fields. Additionally, I made this request before. I wonder if a sidewalk could be installed along the lotto side, the south side of the lotto, in that block where the playground is, the ideal. I don't know. We can afford it, but the ideal to run a sidewalk from 12th Street all the way out to Springville Park was along that side of the lotto street. But there's currently no sidewalk. Okay. So that makes it a way within the park. Couple of other things I noticed are making significant progress on the new apartments on 7th Street. When he said even on a, I haven't done a certain amount of...
April's, I think they're gold. They might make it.
They've never working.
I've been surprised how fast they've been coming up.
They weren't working long. It's good to see that apartments. I too appreciate the, I appreciate replacements, specifically in the 500 block on Main Street in front of Lilith's with Renees and Tell Me and Post Restaurant. There was a tree that was, that needed to be taken down, that raised sidewalks and had a trash house over there that was just there for a long time.
Probably since it was, probably there when it was a post office. Yeah.
Well, I think it'd make it downtown a little more usable when you get out of your car, not walking through mud or gra... I don't, whatever. Yeah.
I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Question I have, I don't really want my oral part, but I had some constituents ask around this. What is the status of the new senior center? Do we have a target date as to when that building will be operational?
Yeah, bids, the 16th. We have pre-bid. Bids are due January 16th. You can pick up bid packets starting December 10th? 8th? So bid packets will be available for contractors. Yeah. As long as the paper gets in. December 8th, they'll be able to pick up their bid packets with the pre-bid, the 16th of December. And bids are due by 4:00 PM on the 16th of January for it. They have 120 days to complete it, pending, you know, you never know if they can step back on a few things. But the projected date of completion is early summer, maybe late spring, but more early summer. We're ready to go. It took a little bit longer, but sometimes things just do. But it's a good plan, so...
Definitely moving forward now.
I do, and I've got some arrangements there, our attorneys there. I do have one additional item, and I should have that, please. I certainly have a picture of those in the Perry County News. And also on the Facebook, that was previously taken in the parking lot. I think those are the tents for supply, the participants in. And I guess they're facing the swimming pool. And if you notice in the picture, two, six person on the side has what appears to me to be an automatic rifle. It's a scope and an handgun magazine. And obviously, I don't know that is loaded or unloaded. And I guess, I guess, I'm wondering what our policy is as far as possession of firearms like this in our city parks. Especially, especially since we're talking about building a sports complex and having many teams come in and participate. At least, I think that's also very...
I recall some background discussion on this. Tyler was our attorney at that time. You know, one time, we did have ordinances, no firearms in our city park, no firearms at our Little League Field. You could not have a firearm at Sunset Park. The state of Indiana, and correct me if I'm wrong here.
You go ahead.
State of Indiana pretty well said, "You can't do that." We could actually have an individual with this type of weapon walk through that door right there, come back there and sit in the back row. And as of right now, he is legally allowed to do that according to the state of Indiana. So I think, under that concept, that individual according to the state of Indiana has that right to carry that weapon anywhere in the city, whether it's loaded or unloaded.
I believe that's correct. I believe, let's put it this way. I believe we still have an ordinance that has not been repealed, but I believe it has been superseded by state law with open carry statutes. It wasn't repealed since I became city attorney.
I think it was repealed, Gary, I think we were, I was either on the council or getting on the council about that time. I think we repealed it, didn't we?
Repealed what?
That ordinance that said you couldn't have those things. I think we repealed that. Connie could look, or Jeff, you...
Well, I'm just...
Yeah, we'd have to check that.
I think we had to.
I'm referring to, we have not done any repeal of any type of ordinance since I've been city attorney, and I can look and see if it was repealed.
We've taken down the signs.
But I believe it would be superseded by state statute right now, anyway.
That is disappointing.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to comment on what my beliefs are when it comes to that. I'm just saying what I believe the law is.
We don't allow deer moving down there, do we? I mean, what purpose?
Certainly, we would be able to prohibit hunting.
What purpose would an individual have in bringing the rifle?
He's exercising his Second Amendment rights, I think. That's what he would tell you.
Well, I'm offended by it for a long time. And if there's anything we can do, restricts such things, I would support that.
Well, I've already decided that if an individual would bring that type of weapon in this group here and sit in one of our meetings, if our police chief was here, I would ask him to go sit directly behind him. You know? That's my feeling on that.
Okay. Moving on. Ward 2, Julie Connor.
So beautification, they did sponsor Christmas in the park, which was last Saturday, from 1:00 to 4:00, and then the Christmas... It was, it's a whole different committee, so things were changed a bit. So we'll look at what went well and what we could do better next year. But overall, it was good, and our grade was, it was something else. I mean, it always is, but I think we had 55 entries for the loads that were registered, but there were actually more than that that ended up coming that day. There were at least 60 plus. But it was just, I thought it was just really, really, really good. It's very proud to be a part of...
You and the rest of the committee and everybody involved did a very good job putting it on. I don't think people appreciate how much we rely on volunteers to make things like that happen. Everybody always wants something, but it takes a group of volunteers to make it happen. It just don't, it just doesn't happen.
Also, like at the last minute, there were, I mean, there's been so many illnesses going around, so there were quite a few people that ended up sick that couldn't do what they were going to do that day. So that made some things not as good in the park that morning or that afternoon. But there was not a whole lot we could do about it. And then we were able to also get a couple of people volunteer at the last minute to come and help, help out that day, too, which was very nice.
Well, thank you to you and everybody. We very appreciate it.
That's all.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Phil couldn't figure this evening. So move on to Ward 4, Mr. Gary Morton.
Comment there, I mean, we missed the parade, what, two years because of COVID?
One year.
One year, only one year.
We had it last year.
We had it. I don't have a report tonight.
Well, you'll have solid waste tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Oh, man.
We'll have a special meeting later this month.
Yeah, to get that report. All right.
I have two, so I can let you know what the commodity price is.
We need, well, I'll be there with you, so I've got the inside now. It's a public meeting, anybody can get. All right. Moving on, we got counsel of ours, Mr. John Little.
The only thing I have to report is I'll be able to tell a couple constituents that have been asking about the trailer down on 12th Street, down the block from the old G Union Hall. Been asking me about, thought it was going to get tore down, and it was reported tonight that it will be tore down or will start off this Wednesday. That's good news.
So great. Any comments or statements from the city attorney or clerk treasurer?
I'm as pleased as John is about the trailer.
We all are. All right. There is no old business, so we're going to move straight down to new business. We have Leah Hawken with Region 15 for the five-year SEDS survey. Leah?
Good evening, there. I am Leah Hawken, as Region 15, Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission out of Furman, and I'm here today to talk about our five-year SEDS and also kind of reintroduce the commission after our entering into a new year as the commission's serving Tel City, Perry County, as well as none of our five other counties, five other cities, and 21 houses. We are established under Indiana Code as a regional planning commission, and we are designated as an economic development district through the Department of Commerce. Because of those designations, we are able to work our communities to prioritize needs and goals, and then we have been in to find federal or state resources to help achieve those needs and goals through project planning, area writing, and administration. Over the last few years, we've been successful in bringing over $150 million back to the region, and that's counting all the million dollars. And to Tel City specifically, we just wrapped the comp plan at just under $50,000. We just wrapped the Tel City goal on Squatch Pad agreements through DMR for $250,000. And we're still underway with the Port Perry infrastructure project for $1.6 million in total, over the years, of $8.7 million. So we're involved here, and I'm from here, and I have a special place in my heart here, so... With all that being said, we are about to start our planning for the five-year SEDS, the comprehensive economic development strategy, where we will, again, help you prioritize your projects and then eventually work to achieve those goals. So it's due in April of 2023, so we have to have a survey. There's a QR code on the park as well as a URL through Survey Monkey. You can also get to it on our website through the reporting page. But we're looking for public input, so I pass it out to all our janitors. Thank you. They all are welcome to fill that out. We also have that on our Facebook page, Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission. And we'll need kind of, over the next few weeks. And then in January, more specific project listings will be coming around for review in the cities and towns and counties. Our current director, Nathan Hallsam, will be stepping down in the year as director, and will be staying on as an advisory role in finishing out some of her projects. But Nathan Hallsam will be coming around and introducing himself as our new director, as well as going over some of these projects. And everyone, have a voice.
Lisa, we really appreciate the partnership we have with Region 15. It's been an asset to Perry County and Tel City, as well as the whole region, everything you all did. So we very appreciate it. Counsel, do you have any questions for Leah while she's up here?
It's been a good, it's been a good working relationship, and we hope it continues that way.
Thank you, Leah. Thanks, Leah. Moving on, under new business, item B, the Perry County Development Corporation contact. We have CEO of the corporation, Ms. Erin Amerson. You said a dollar? It's $5. She needs one back here.
I think there's enough.
Yeah.
We have enough anyways.
We'll just pass them all around. All right. Give me one back, because I gave mine away now. Please. Thank you. We'll get this straightened out in a minute. It's all good.
All right. I am here tonight for our annual contract renewal. Before I do that, I did want to take an opportunity to give a quick update on the things that I've been working on and that we are going to be working on in coming year. The first slide is about the evolving role of economic development. I know that we talk about this a lot lately, but the traditional sense of economic development in terms of business attraction is definitely no longer the case. in terms of business attraction is definitely no longer the case. It evolved, and as you can see, with business attraction, business retention, expansion, community development, workforce development, entrepreneurship, small business development, quality of life, and talent retention and attraction. On the next slide, I just took, these are quotes directly from some of the RFI's or the requests for information that we have received in the past year, and these were listed as deciding factors for companies in terms of where to locate. Adequate labor pool, access to rail, move-in ready, incentive, labor availability, quality, and dependability. Room for expansion, workforce, over and over again, workforce, all utilities on site, and community enthusiasm for the project. Those have been trending in that direction, and this past year, workforce has become all the more important and one of the most critical deciding factors for our company. On the next slide, I have just some brief information about where do new business leads come from. The majority of them come through the state from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. We do get those directly from them, and they will specify if they are statewide or just for certain region or county. We also sometimes get leads through regional partners or utility partners, commercial realtors, local industry, or even direct contact officially. What are they looking for when we are contacted? They are looking for existing buildings a lot of the time, especially this past year, those requests went up and up. They want to be able to find a building, move in, and be ready to operate very quickly. And so if you don't already have a building, that timeframe is going to be extended. Pre- permitted build-to-suit options. If they do not want an existing building, they likely would like a greenfield that is flat, ready to go, has all the utilities in place, zoning is done on some type of major transportation vein, pro-business atmosphere, things like that. But what are they actually looking at? They're looking at our community. They look at our demographics, our labor force statistics, our labor shed, are they cool? Talent pipelines, what kind of training do we have in the region? What kind of certificates? Sometimes it's down to how many types of a certain engineering degree have been conferred in a certain mile radius. They are very, very specific, but again, ties a lot back to workforce and the local quality of life, again, back to workforce, because it is the people, the population and the talent. As of today, we have received seventy-four requests for information from the state, and based upon the criteria provided and the sites that we have available to submit, we were able to respond to seven of those requests. But they are very, very specific, and a lot of them are requesting enormous amount of acreage, flat land, or large, large buildings that are already ready to go. Which leads into business retention and expansion. It is really difficult to snag a new company, which means it is all the money that they want to ensure we retain all of our existing employers and that we hopefully expand them and really solidify their presence in our community. We work really hard to build close relationships with our major employers and our industries so that if they come to us and they do see potential downsizing or the potential to expand, we try to address any barriers before they become serious. We can also assist with infrastructure improvements, we can be a liaison for state local incentives, we can connect them with state federal grant loan programs. But at the end of the day, workforce, 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 workforce is extremely important without it. It is difficult to retain. So, one of the reasons that we were so excited with these census that came out in 2020, and I did take a page of some of the information from the recent city comp plan, because it was so exciting, and I really thought that it was worded perfectly, so I would refer to it. The population did increase three point two percent, which was twenty ten to twenty twenty. Our median age declined from forty-three point one to thirty-eight point one. And the quote directly from the comp plan, "The largest age group seen in 2020 was children under five years of age, a dramatic and positive shift over a ten-year span. Comparing the change in population from twenty ten to twenty twenty, the age pyramid begins to shift to a more stable growth from twenty twenty." Typically seen in communities are beginning to make a shift back to population growth. This is strengthened further by the large increase in children under five years of age in Tel City. And as of that, the 2020 census, children under five years of age were the largest portion of the population pyramid, which was like a total flip-flopping of the pyramid in that ten-year time span. So we really are headed in the right direction, and that is what we absolutely must do in order to remain viable for our schools, our businesses, and our employers. So, it is really important that we continue that growth, and we need to have the amenities that go with that. Big part of that is just connecting people and letting them figure out that this is a place where they can truly meet people and find friends and find a new home. We do a lot of events. We this year did the Perry County After Hours event, which was a networking event. We invited as many new people to the community as possible, it was open to the public, and then we invited, of course, people who already live here, because we wanted those new people to have a chance to connect with people who already live here and start to put down roots. It was really well attended, it worked really well. We actually planned a follow-up in August, but we got totally rained out when school started. We'll do it again next year. We partner with the JAMR CPB to do the Welcome Backs, which any new resident, prospective resident or resident to town, we do put those together, and they have lots of opportunities to get involved in the local community. It may just be a scoop of free ice cream or a tasting of wine, but it will get you out and get you into the community. Lots of local listings, things like that. And then one example of that kind of action is the Edgewood, Tennessee, Waipaka Plan, with that downsized earlier this year. It downsized, they closed it, and it impacted five hundred employees. All of those employees were given the option to transfer to another Waipaka location, so they could go to Wisconsin, or they could come to Tel City. And we were given the opportunity to do it, to gather some acts for that. We put some goodies in there, came up with a survey, like a QR code, so that they can let us know what their questions about the community were, or what they would be looking for if they do come here. And then we responded to those individual requests and connected them with housing, and sometimes it was one phone call after another to eventually try and find someplace that was open or that would be open soon so that they could actually live in our community. Unfortunately, several of them did end up locating in Kentucky, because we don't have enough housing. So there just were not places for all of them to stay here, but that is really one of the reasons that we have continued to focus on housing and trying to work on growing that constantly. Another big part of what we work on is community development, again, housing, housing, housing. Multi-family housing, we need rentals, so that people that are coming into the community have a chance to build a house if they want to, get familiar with the community. And then we do have a lot of temporary workers as well that are currently in our hotels, because we don't have enough rental housing. And then single-family housing as well, and we'll talk about that in a little bit with the rental projects. Childcare affordability and accessibility is huge, especially when looking at those census numbers, knowing that the largest portion of the population is under five and they keep it left by themselves. We want their parents to go to work, we have to continue to address that. We worked really hard this year to raise our voucher reimbursement rate, so for a child that income is low enough that the state will pay for them to attend a childcare center. Perry County did have one of the lowest reimbursement rates in the state, and it was much lower than a private pay parent, but we worked to calculate our actual cost of care and submitted that, and it's a complicated process, but we were able to get our reimbursement rate increased by a hundred and fifty or more percent, and we now have one of the highest reimbursement rates in the state of Indiana, which makes things like running a licensed childcare facility viable and sustainable. And we have to be viable and sustainable in order to continue to have that service and hopefully expand it. And then we worked a lot just overall on advocacy throughout the state, because it is really a broken system and needs fixed from the state level. We have worked on mental health and addiction services with the Perry County Mental Health Coalition. Helps to cheer that. We have met every other month throughout the year. We've sought out different grant opportunities, we've worked with local partners and really tried to increase the availability of services. It's a very tough area, like childcare, to impact, but we are continuing to plug away, and I think it's across the state going to be dealt with more and more in the coming year, and my hope is that more and more funding will become available so that we can increase the number of providers practicing here. Workforce development, another huge part of that, if you don't have people, you need them to have the skills or be interested in the jobs that are available. We partner with our local school corporations, Ivy Tech and Southwest Indiana Workforce Board, on our workforce development initiatives. We also manage the Perry County Learning Partnership and the Perry County College Excellence Coalition, which puts on events like Aspire, which we like to call Aspire, Speed Dating for Careers. All sophomores from the county, and if they get the opportunity to network with over eighty professionals from the community, they spend about fifteen, ten to fifteen minutes at a table with a couple of them, and they rotate. They spend the day doing that, and it really, we strategically pick people that are there, those professionals that day, so that they get a really view of all of our unique careers that are available in our community. And then we had been off for a year, but with total really awesome to get back, and it has been very, very well, and well reviewed. We had the opportunity again this year, which takes, this year was the Perry Central and Tel City eighth grader, and then all of them had the opportunity to, to Waipaka, ATDC, Perry County Medical Hospital, and Ivy Tech. And there were multiple employers also set up at Ivy Tech. And one of the teachers at Tel City, like, for our family member there, and they were doing hands-on activities with the kids. They had somebody there that was, had his hood popped open, and they had mechanics, and it was very, very hands-on, and the kids really had an opportunity to see what some of those careers were like. We also do job and career affairs, and we help out when schools are doing mom and uncle career day. Next week or the week after that, I will be spending a day with eighth graders talking about those careers I'm purchasing. Funding life, another big part of all of this, this year, we did the fourth annual Hope Art Festival and the fifth annual Farm and Table Dinner. And for Farm and Table Dinner, we partner with Tel City, Perry Central, FVA, and we were able to, as a result of the fundraising that we did, donate a thousand dollars back to each of those programs and health facilities. And it's just a really great opportunity for all of the students to be involved. And this year is our ten, anniversary of Hope Art. So we have some fun stuff planned this year, and we actually had a meeting this morning, and we're gonna do a dodgeball tournament, which is very popular so far, so. Entrepreneurship and small business development, we partner with the Perry County Chamber, and we work with a lot of local businesses, and we are a sponsor of the Indiana Small Business Development Center, and they have free one-on-one business counseling. Come to our office or come to Perry County and meet with local businesses. We have met with many, many local businesses, totally free and confidential, and they will, they can help with industry reports, and they can help with business plans, they can help with troubleshooting, and that. And then we do post jobs for any Perry County employer on our website, on our job opportunities page as well. And so we already did all that other stuff before, and then this day came out with a ready program, and it has been a whirlwind, but it has been a huge chunk of this past year, and the program allocated five hundred million dollars of state funding is to have counties form into regions and come up with plans to become magnets for talent, which is really all about workforce and growing our population so that we can grow the state. We formed with four other counties, and we formed the Indiana First Region, it's those little yellow counties, the little logo there. The blue ones and the yellow ones together, we kept Swide at Southwest Indiana Development Council, but some of those dark blue counties have the opportunity to form into a region that is worth of them, so that they would have that direction, and we are not contingent with those counties, so. Were we invited to partner with them? So we formed our own region in order to be able to have a shot at that funding. Regions did ask for up to fifty million, which we did ask for fifty million. The state awarded every region that applied for the program, so there was a way that everyone was going to get full fifty million. Our region got fifteen million, and Perry County will be getting two point six three five million of that, the projects. There were many, many, many projects submitted as part of that process, but of course, they have to be vetted out, there was not enough money to fund them all, and then the state determined that they were going to use the ARP funding to fund the program, which then changed a lot of the eligibility for the projects. They had to fit into ARP guidelines, so that cut out a lot of projects as well. But our final four projects are the Future Heights subdivision, which will be receiving up to one million in ready funding for water, wastewater, and roadways, with a total project investment of twelve million. Forest Camp Heights subdivision, up to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand in ready funding for water, wastewater, and roadways. You can see a trend there, because that's ARP eligible. Total project investment at seven million. Tel City Sports Complex, up to five hundred and ten thousand dollars in ready funding. Sam Series Silver and our ADA facility, Press Box concessions and restaurants, and I believe we've kind of narrowed it down to covering that facility with a total project investment of six point nine million. And we just added the Ivy Tech workforce training enhancement project, three hundred and fifty thousand in ready funding, which will go toward the HR and the labs, which right now there is not, and so they can only do classes in the summer and the morning hours, because it gets really, really hot out there. Or they literally just have limited access to the labs, because they are not able to HR. And some advanced automation for robotics, but now with a total project investment of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So those are the ready projects, they are not. We have put a lot of work into them, and they have quite started, yes. So this coming year will be really seeing those two fruition, they may not be complete, they need to be complete by 2026, but hopefully much sooner than that. But the state has now introduced the concept of Ready Two Point O. On the Future Heights, Phase One of that, several months back, we talked about the need for housing, so I believe Phase One should be thirty-three, single-family homes, and Forest Camp Heights subdivision will be twenty-nine. And those have to be completed by the end of 2026, but hopefully much sooner. Looking ahead to 2023, like I said, we'll get down to the ready, those are the real kind of work of seeing those projects start to happen, hopefully will begin in the next couple of months. And then the state has already indicated that they plan to do a Ready Two Point O. The governor is planning to go to the legislature and ask for another round of funding to do that, but hope is that it will feel more flexible this time, because they will not be using their ARP funding. So the original intent of the program, they really encourage regions to think creatively, think of your dream project that would grow your region and your talent pipeline. But again, you're, I'll take. But again, you're cut off to ARP. Like, they really cut out some of those, really creative projects. So the hope is around to, we can submit some, it's really exciting. Back up to strategic planning. The Perry County Development Corporation is currently in the process of doing strategic planning. We did a community input survey, and hopefully the council receives an email, links to that, and also for those that'll Facebook and Lucid, we'll make sure we can keep that going back every week. We're working on one-on-one state letter interviews right now, and we did just hold a half-day strategic session with our board and with some community stakeholders. And we should be wrapping up that process in the first part of next year. And we did just announce a remote work or attraction program, which we are extremely excited about. We are partnering with Make My Move. We are funding it with $25,000, and there is some match money from local endowment, which will get it even more. And then there's additional match money from the state, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. So we will have a program that will pay people new to Indiana, new coming here to work, either remotely, or they could be working for an employer, or bringing a business with them, but it will be $7,000 cash incentive to move here, move here. And then we are looking to partner with some other organizations in the community that might be willing to kind of sweeten that package and add some local amenities or get them involved in the community. Some memberships, things like that. And we will, we actually have our kickoff meeting with the company later this week, and then in January, they will come here in person, and we'll do some filming for some of our getting and things like that. And we should get at least eight new residents, and the goal of that program is ideally those residents will be higher-income residents, especially they are local workers, which really adds to tax revenue. Hopefully they'll have kids, and those kids will be in our schools. That is kind of looking ahead as well. You guys have the contract?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it's the state's share, yeah, their share. Correct, and they decided that's how they were going to fund the work.
And you mentioned workforce housing.
Yes.
I saw. The legal office, the other day, did any incentive or something, development of workforce housing in Tel City. Were you involved in that?
I'm not directly involved. I can't say that the port does own some property, and they are looking to utilize it for workforce housing. But I am not directly involved with that, but I will tell you that I am working on a weekly basis with housing developers, identifying pieces of land, doing site visits in order to increase that multi-family number of housing. But I can't say much about the port's project.
Do you know anything about it?
About what she knows, not on the port, but like she said, the port does have some land that they want to sell to a developer in hopes of building some housing for workforce development. So they're accepting proposals and bids for this property now. I think they're due December 16th, 13th? Something like that? It's what the legal office said, I can't remember the exact date.
Well, I just noticed the legal office.
It's great that they're willing to sell land that they don't longer see necessary for housing, it's what we need.
And Aaron, I appreciate your board, and I appreciate your activities and all the accomplishments, specifically this past year. And you mentioned about the increase of childcare voucher fee, which is important. What about the capacity of childcare center?
We, we need to, we are maxed out at our current capacity. We have 56, so yes, we need to ideally increase our capacity. It always honestly made me nervous before because knowing the sustainability of it and the financial model, I feel much better now that we have been able to raise our voucher reimbursement rate and get reimbursed for what it truly costs us to provide the care. It starts to make that equation make sense. But I don't, I think we would need to relocate, ideally, build from the ground up, knowing what we know about licensing, square footage, pages, layouts, everything that we know now.
Even with the attraction or the building of a different housing, and the attraction of the more workforce, with people from any of the places where it is, government.
They absolutely do.
And by not wanting to associate with childcare.
That, yes, that is true. We have, Perry Childcare has 56 seats, and then there are 24 others that are private and home sitters, and one of those will be retiring within the next six months or less. So that will take us out of 68,000 spots. And Perry Central is working to increase their capacity and what they can do, and by taking advantage of that increased voucher reimbursement rate. But it's just, I don't, it is broken.
Okay. Counsel at this time, I think Aaron's open, do you give me other comments, Aaron? Or you're open for questions? Counsel, do you have any questions for Aaron regarding the PCDC contract? Gary does serve on PCDC as our representative. He reports quite a bit on.
I've been on there a number of years, and I've always been impressed by the professionalism there, and the fact that those people, they give it a maximum effort in trying to keep this county going forward, you know, because I've been to numerous meetings at various places around the state, and we bring in the experts, and what they tell us is that every community is either going forward today or is going backward. No community reaches the status quo. People say, hey, look at us, we're doing great. It's a continual climb, either going forward or looking in the rearview mirror where you used to be, okay? And they're doing a good job there. I'm highly impressed by the professionalism there.
Is this dollar amount of cost of, how much is that compared to the voucher?
It's up.
It is up, it's based on that 20%.
Of your edit funds?
Their funds?
Yes, sir.
So it is 148,879, and in 2022, it was 129,916. But that is based on straight math of 20% of what you did from the state, which ideally is good data. It means that, you know, more people are working higher wages, but yeah, it's based on the 20%.
So Counsel, if there are no further questions or any commotion to authorize myself as mayor to sign this agreement.
I will make that motion.
We have a motion made by Gary, you hear his second. Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, but call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aaron, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Moving on, new business item C, FEMA, Perry County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Counsel, what this is, this is an update of our multi-hazard mitigation plan. I participated in numerous of these sessions where we went through our plan and what we would do, and Steve Hauser has sent us this information here as far as what we need to do, as far as updating it and passing a resolution. So I'm going to pass over to Jeff, because I have a lot to read later, let him read something.
Well, I'm kind of cold on this. Do we need a motion to authorize a?
Not for a resolution. We've seen a resolution number.
I need a resolution number, that's all I need. Thank you, Connie.